Mr. Burris, please.
The allegiance.
Thank you, everyone, everyone online and that's attending. We're going down to the number three approval minutes for regular meeting in January 25th. Hopefully, everyone has a chance to take a look at that. Any do, please, take a motion.
I approve the minutes of January 25th.
There a second? Oh, yes, before we do that, Mr. Fuller, welcome. It's good seeing you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Richard Vodino and seconded by Commissioner Fuller. Oh, you're right. Right, thank you. Well, I need another second, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gates. Again, Commissioner Vodino made the motion, Commissioner Gates second. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous approval for minutes. Down to Commissioner comments, number four, I'm going to start with the Commissioner Gates.
The only thing I want to say is it's good to see Bill Fuller. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Commissioner Vodino?
He took my comment, so thank you.
I'll just go ahead and say good to have you here.
All right, Commissioner Fuller, I know you have a lot to say. No?
How are you? All this new stuff. My right lung was completely full of something, and so was my chest cavity. And that said you're going to have to have things drained. I was saying Joseph spoke four holes in my side and drained all the stuff. After that, I don't remember a lot for quite a few days, but it's been a rehab adventure, learning to walk again. Still have some things that don't work right, but working on it and appreciate all the good wishes tonight. And I'll be here next month.
Thank you, Richard Fuller. So just my comments too, I'm going to agree with everyone says, I did visit Commissioner Fuller. You know, I saw him, I actually told him he should keep his beard. So if everyone wants to know, he looks really good, and I think, but he's kidding with me, says, I don't know, I think you should. But anyway, really quick, you know, I know that some of us went to the, my comments, went to the mayor's city, State of the City. I thought it was really good, and I know that our folks were there in force at the, Pat and Chaney was there. Commissioner Vodino spent a lot of time over there, thank you. But anyway, the only other thing I have, I know that there's some folks leaving, excuse me, a department, and I just want to thank those folks that have departed on their ways and gone other places, you know. I know that Lieutenant Yeah, thank you. Just escaped my head, Lieutenant White, B.C. Herrera, and I know that we're, entries not here right now too. So I just want to thank them for all the efforts and what they've done for the community and just district and the department, really. So so we're down to item five, any public comments, anyone sign up for anything, anyone who likes to public comment, please? Please identify yourself, your name and the address. No one? Okay. So we're going down to item six was the bridge plan update.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Seth Rosenbloom, and I've been working with the district for about two years, first on developing and launching the organizational health assessment. And then about a year ago, working to ratify a strategic plan, a two-year plan. And we come back to you, to this board, four times a year to sort of give updates on the progress of implementing that plan. So I want to provide a little bit of background, I know we've got some new commissioners today to just talk about sort of what that plan entails. And then dive a little deeply into some real important work that the district's pursuing this year. I've got an appendix in the back of this, which is a very detailed dashboard of all the strategic items. I'm probably not going to get into that level of detail, but we'll sort of talk a high level, the work underway, and definitely want to make time for your questions. The purpose of the plan, it was to kind of be a bridge, a bridge from coming out of COVID to a new future for the district that was really predicated on a different funding model. And, and the district realized they needed that bridge to kind of span from the end, the end of last year to, to what will be the beginning of 2025. It was adopted, it was developed through a cross-working effort across the district late the year before, and adopted just about a year ago by this body. It really has two big objectives. And it prepares for a different funding model for the future. And then it also addresses some needs and opportunities that surfaced out of this org health assessment that was done really in the areas of leadership, accountability, and improving internal communications. There are 20 objectives in the entire plan. We, we are tracking each one of them. They fall into these four big pillars. Funding, which I, which I discussed. In, in the health survey, it was noted that accountability had grown lax in certain areas. And so work was determined in the plan to really improve the way employees, leadership, staff, civilian firefighter are holding each other accountable. There's also an effort in the strategic plan to double down on leadership, the competencies, the skills, and the support and training for leaders in both the civilian side and firefighting side of the district. And then finally, areas to just really improve how, how people communicate, especially across departments internally in the district. The way work leading the strategic plan has been organized. Under the chief's direction, there's a steering committee. And then there's sort of chairs that have been leading work groups across these areas, which you can see ordered here. As we've accomplished a lot, and as we pivot into the second year of the plan and really focus on some big financial pieces, there's been a little bit of the rebalancing of who's working on what, just to really stay focused for, for the work ahead. What's been accomplished so far? In the areas of accountability and leadership, HR, in partnership with firefighters and with civilian leadership, have rolled out an evaluation process looking at performance, and this is not something that had been done in the district for a long time. They designed this process, rolled it out just about the end of last year. A goal by a year from now is that everybody seated in a role will have gone through a performance evaluation, not punitive, but really just to mark people's accomplishments in role and to illustrate where there could be ability to rise in succession in the organization. Very importantly, work is underway, looking at firefighter leadership capability, training, and expectation. And to determine that the training and the opportunities to, to, to rise in role are not only available, but are supported through resources, either through the consortium or elsewhere in the community. An evaluation is underway, looking at the ratio of supervisors to firefighters, looking at peer agencies. This might develop some recommendations for change further down the road. It's something that will be brought forward to the chief a little later on this year to see if change is necessary there. And finally, some new practices are being put in place, especially improving how officers and crews have oversight by operations leadership. These were all things that were sort of surfaced in this organizational health assessment of areas to improve. In the area of internal communications and planning, new, well, I don't know if they're new, but I would say revived, transparent, and objective promotion practices have been put in place, and this is some policy that I believe has been moved forward at the end of last year. There's more consistency in communication between battalion chiefs and operations staff. Some examples of that were shared, I know with the commissioners last year. This thing that I think was sort of communicated pretty loudly in the survey was, you know, companies just wanted to hear really consistently from their battalion chiefs and their leaderships. Some communication practice has been put in place. Desire for transparency in budgeting. A new budget.
When should we ask questions?
Anytime, all right.
New practices are being put in place to improve officer and crew oversight by operations leadership. What does that mean?
Well, some, I'll let the chief speak to this.
Give an example.
Okay, there we go, sorry. Well, one example that came out of the, the conversations and the working group was the crews really felt like they needed to see their battalion chiefs more. So instituting expectations with the battalion chiefs that twice a month, they need to be out visiting the stations, and they need to be communicating face to face. We were relying a lot on emails and phone calls and morning tie-ins that are great, but they're kind of impersonal, right? And so that's been part of it. Part of it has been a standardized approach to the rotational highlights so that the bullet points that are in, are there for training and upcoming activities. So those are just two examples, it's really been how we, how we communicate from the B.C.'s to the crews and how often they physically see somebody.
I recall that being an issue with, before I left, for a long time ago. And it just didn't jump out of me that that was the B.C. issue.
Yep, and that, that went all the way back to the organizational health assessment, right? That the crews felt like they needed more face time with their B.C.'s.
Thank you.
And thank you for your question, and I don't want to race through this too fast. I did want to cover some of the ground that we've covered so far to make space for those questions. I was mentioning also in this area of communication and planning, there's work being put in place to just tighten up some guidelines for how people talk to each other inside the, the district, especially across departments. There's not been consistency around the way memorandums are used, the way email is used. It's just to streamline the communication, especially between departments, sort of in this, in this, in this fourth bullet here. And lastly, but not least, a build-out is occurring to create like an internal portal, an employee resource center, something online that has a lot of information around scheduling, around forms, around H.R. information, to just make it easier for firefighters to sort of have like a one-stop shop to where to get access to that information. And that's going to launch mid-year, it's going to be added to, just streamlining to help, to help firefighters have better information at, at their disposal. This year's going to focus a lot on funding. Late last year, Joe came before the commissioners to seek approval for a recommendation to pursue a different mechanism for how the district's funded. The lid lifts and maintenance and operation levies meet their natural expiration at the end of this year. And after analysis that Joe's team did, looking at peer agencies, looking at parcel data in the district, there's been a movement in direction to go towards a fire benefit charge. This is something that would be placed on the ballot this coming August and brought to the community for a vote. And so embarking on that work has a lot of different aspects to it. It entails, and this is sort of the work ahead in that area. There's information and education that's going to be required to be able to begin to communicate to people in the community what this means, what this change requires. There's just hard data analysis, looking at parcels, I think there's 45,000 of them in the district, to determine the kind of fees that would be imposed upon them and how that would be different than through property taxes to bring in revenue. And that analysis is, is near complete. Obviously, there's legal and governance work to get an initiative on the ballot. That, of course, will come before you for approval, before that does go to the voters. And then, of course, on the back end, just penciling out the math, if you migrate to this, what's the budget going to look like starting in fiscal year 25? This year, there's work on kind of all of these fronts with the goal in mind of getting voter approval, hopefully on August 6th, for a fire benefit charge to become the funding mechanism for, for the district. And so Joe is, is leading the charge on a lot of these efforts. Obviously, engaging, very importantly, we've got Brad here on Community Affairs. He's got a team looking at the data and the analysis behind that. I see, I think, district attorneys here will be assisting in the language and actually making sure that this is per statute as it gets on the, on the ballot. Um, and workshops and education opportunities coming together because this is about getting out in the community, making sure that leaders such as the chiefs kind of understand what this means and what this means for the community fiscally, but also how important it is to just sustain the fire service in the community.
As I recall, this, this was on the agenda, and this analysis and schedule has been developed. It's probably not a discussion, but Joe, do we have Plan Bs still in there? We talked about those, if the benefit charge didn't pass, you can say yes or no, and we can talk about it later. Okay. Okay, thank you.
We'll be back. There's, there's a lot of work here on a lot of different levels. Joe has kicked off work to develop kind of like the community awareness and messaging around what this means. And workshops will actually be scheduled. I think some will create an opportunity for each of you to engage as well in learning about what the fire benefit charges means, understanding the nitty gritty from a fiscal perspective, but also understanding some of the messaging that the district's going to begin to get out their digital, social media engagement, the, the chief getting out there and talking to people in the community. I, I know Joe is going to come back to you with preliminary language for, for a ballot initiative. And then ultimately, you'll, you'll approve what the ballot initiative looks like, and you also approve some of the different formulas that go into that, which impact the way people would, would be charged, a fire benefit charge based on the type of property that they're, that they're associated with. And board approval is sought for that. And then, of course, you know, getting us on the initiative in King County. And then kind of leading a, a marketing effort so that folks from the fire service here are talking to people in the community to drive awareness for the fire service in general. And, and just to make them aware that there's an opportunity to support a different way of funding the district going forward. Let me stop there for, for your questions about kind of what's ahead, what's the work on the strategic plan?
Might be a little early for this one, but have we looked at what other departments have done to implement their fire benefit charge? And on perfect any lower hanging fruit that might work for us?
I can, yeah. It's occurred, I believe, on a couple of levels. So I know that in the analysis last year, Don Gentry came from Puget Sound, and they went on a similar journey where they evolved into a fire benefit charge from the, a property tax levy. And then I believe in the analysis, they looked at Renton. I believed you also looked at parts of Pierce County, if I, if I've got that right. And so there's a sort of a technical aspect of that, like what tools did you use to call the data to figure it out? But then there's a, another aspect of that, and that is how did you engage with your community to win support for it? And that work is going on. Joe has engaged Cassie Swenson, who's done a lot of work locally here in getting a school board initiative passed. And Joe is also in discussion, I know, the consulting firm in Seattle that's looked at specifically these kinds of ballot initiatives in Western Washington.
Sounds like you've touched a lot of bases.
That's really my update, you know, on the, on the strategic plan, and I know more specifically, you know, Joe will, will be coming back to you with updates for things for your, your governance and approval. And we come back quarterly just to provide updates in general on the, on the broader plan and its implementation.
Doesn't Joe, would you, with Cassie's plan, she has, will you, she, I guess she'll put a timeline out, right? For hers?
If I went out to Station 66, my station, and asked them, what is the fire benefit charge? What the answer would I get?
I think they have a good understanding of what it is, but to, to add to the other question a minute ago, Cassie has a timeline and a full education plan that we're going to come before the board and share. In a nutshell, we will have sessions where we educate everybody internally. And anything beyond what basic education is, citizens will be handed a contact card to contact a core group of people that are subject matter experts on the funding mechanism. This is going to be a very structured and educational rollout.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any, are you done?
Yeah, unless there's any more questions for me.
Yeah, any questions? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Commissioner Committee reports. I don't think any, is there any committee reports? There isn't any? Yeah. Thank you. So we'll move on to Commissioner Committee assignments. I know that list is up here somewhere. Someplace. Anyway, most of the committee assignments were done, and I know that I know I was talking about maybe, you know, I'll lay it put together and revise it if I have to, so I think it's not up there, so I don't have it in my head, like probably reaching my bag, but I don't want the time to do it. Good. But mainly, if you look at the guidelines or the budget fiscal, there's medical committees and things like that in there, and so those assignments were made. Well, they're going to rotate. Thank you, Lord. If you have one. I think I can get it, but let's read it. Thank you. So we have the budget, finance, and audit, we had insurance committee, policy and procedure committee, emergency management committee, emergency consolidations, legislative affairs, strategic leadership committees, legal committees, public safety committee. There's one that created called the Culture Engagement Committee, kind of just formalizes what we're doing for D E I itself. And then the Joint Labor Management Committee, of course, that's on a rotating basis. So really, that's for 2024, 25. There's alternates on there, of course, for each one of them, except there's all of them. So, and the plan is to just rotate folks around too, again, so I know they don't meet all the time, but we had to make the, the only one that didn't have is alternate is Legal Committee. Excuse me, that's the only one. So the Culture Engagement Committee is basically again formalizing some D E I stuff, and then kind of working with, with Mary on some things to see how they want to work things and just formalize that, that. I know that Carolyn and myself were asked to be on that committee, but formalize that a little bit and make sure we get teeth on that a little bit of what we want to do now on.
I was in the loop on that, could I take up?
Yes. And at the time I made this too, I did talk to Commissioner Fuller about it, saying, hey, you know, we're going to make some assignments, and we can always change them too. And I saw him, so I just wanted to be sure too, he was, he was good for that. So is there any questions of those, we can go over those if you want? Okay, you can do it later, if you want. Go ahead, Commissioner Gates.
I had a couple, couple comments I wanted to make, I was a little bit I'm not sure what, when I saw the Commissioner Committee list, it's a little different than what the way we've done things in the past. And my concern with it is, well, to educate the audience, we've got nine committees. We don't count J L M. But we have nine committees here, and each committee needs two commissioners. So two times nine is 18 committee assignments that have to be made. If we look at the, at the board, Commissioner Vodino is on, has six of those, is on six of those committees. So right away, she's been given one-third of the, of the committee assignments. Commissioner Brusso is next with five committees. So when those two right there, they have 11 of the 18 slots. They had one more, we could say they have two-thirds. But anyway, 11 from 18 leaves seven, seven positions to be split between the remaining three board members. And as it turns out, Mr. Burris is two, Mr. Fuller is two, and I have three. So I just think there's some real inequity here, or another way to put it, we're sure not sharing the wealth. We're sure not I'm, I'm going to ask to be taken off of two committees that I don't think, that I think there are better people to do it than me. And those are, happen to be the two committees that Mr. Burris and, excuse me, Brusso and Vodino are not on. But at the present time, those two are on seven of, either alone or together, they are on seven of the nine committees. And the two that I want to be taken off of are the mergers and consolidations and public safety. For example, public safety ought to be, you know, maybe Commissioner Burris. I don't have any experience as a firefighter or in fire prevention. I can't hold a decent conversation if somebody wants to talk about fire sprinkler systems, you know, that's not my thing. But I think somebody else ought to be, ought to be on that committee. They can do it better than me. But if I get off of those two, two committees, and those are the two committees that Commissioner Brusso and Vodino are not on. So if they appoint one of themselves to those two committees, then they will two, they will be represented on all nine committees. Which makes it easy when we get to Commissioner Committee reports, the two of them can give all the reports. Anyway, I just think there's some real inequity here.
Bill, I'm glad you put it that way, just glancing at it, that's what leaped out at me. And yes, I was not part of the the implementation over the last two months, but I think that there are scenarios where people have expertise, I have expertise in emergency management. I have expertise in emergency management. And I think I always also have one in strategic leadership. So yes, I think there should be a better match of what our expertise or experience has been with these committees. And certainly the number and the distribution of those numbers.
And I did, I did ask to be on two committees. And I was put on the committees as alternates. So anyway, that's my thoughts on it.
Mine too.
Your deal?
I have a similar comment. I was unaware I was on so many committees until this list came out. And there are some that really aren't something I'm qualified for as well. Emergency management, for example, I think that would make more sense for firefighters here. And I do think that it is not an equitable split of committees. So I would ask if you could distribute them evenly. And is there process wise, do we have to approve this tonight, or can it be reevaluated?
I don't think we do. Assignments.
I think our, it's by February.
February, yeah. Yeah, that's the reason why. You know, and having a little input on this, mainly for me to get things done and also, also to rotate folks around initially. And I understand that folks may not be comfortable with some of those committees. But that's part of growing and learning about the Fire Department also. You'd want to be off of there. You know, it's good to learn about things, really. And I, people get comfortable, folks get comfortable in different committees, I get it. Excuse me. And I've been there too. But be able to understand the workings of everything, it's kind of nice to rotate folks around. I'm not set on this. You know, I knew this is, was gonna have some comment on it, so I just wanted to kind of get that out there. So you can make revisions to it.
I think there is some further discretion as a group.
Agree.
A group of commissioners. I don't know, I'll leave it to your folks to determine. I guess we have to have a special meeting or something like that, but I'm not sure it warrants a special meeting. Somehow to get the input of each one of us. That's.
Oh, yeah. Got to turn on the mic.
All right. Well, you could call a special meeting for purposes of discussing this. You certainly don't have to, and it might not be a wise use of taxpayer money, to be frank with you. You could discuss it at a regular meeting, i.e. right now, or you could discuss it at the regular meeting next month. So within the discretion of the board to decide whether you'd call a special meeting to discuss it. So there's no legal requirement to do that, certainly.
I think it'd be better to hold it in some meeting without a lot of people there for it to be able to have a little arm wrestling and not have to subject the people in, in an audience. But I'd, I'd suggest some kind of a special meeting or some meeting of, we aren't gonna be making, the only decision we're gonna try to make is, is that the members of the leaders of these committees, is that a public records, need a public records request?
Would you need to get a public records request to know who the leaders of the committees are?
I'm just thinking, we got five of us here, and that probably, we had it, we have less than two, less than three. You have five, so I'm used to using the three.
Well, if you're going to have a group of commissioners, i.e. a quorum of commissioners, be in the same room together or meet and discuss issues of district business, you need to call a meeting and notice it as such, whether it's a special meeting or it's a regular meeting. Can't talk about it outside of a public meeting if a quorum of you are going to be talking about it. So yes, if members of the board as a quorum want to talk about committee assignments, then yes, it needs to occur in an open, public meeting. It's just a question of whether it's going to be a special meeting or a regular meeting. Certainly not going to be an emergency meeting, but yeah.
But it has to be an open meeting.
Yes.
Reverse. Is the chair open to making some changes?
Well, yeah, I'm open. Now, we can do them later. Exactly. Well, that's the thing. We do it now, we do it later. You want to discuss it, or you want to think about it, we can have another meeting about it. But go ahead.
Personally, don't think we need to have a special meeting for this. So I guess the question is today, or can we do it next month?
The chair, I'm open to both. I don't really, you guys, everyone wants to mill on it, and we can discuss it next month. I'm fine with that, too.
I go for next month.
Okay.
And then is it okay if each person maybe emails you with what committees they'd like to be on and what committees they would not like to be on? And you can just change things around a little bit, and maybe people will be a little happier next meeting.
I don't take issue with that. As long as you don't engage with one another about it, the mere passive receipt of information is not a meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's just make sure we don't have a dialogue about why, you know, Commissioner Burris doesn't want to be on this committee. Just provide a list of the committees you want to be on and otherwise not.
Was listening.
Yes, you were. Well done.
Got that part. Yeah, right. So I'm gonna go ahead and table this of committee assignments. I would ask that other commissioners email me with their choices and also their reasons for next meeting. Discuss the next meeting. So that being said, any other questions? Or move forward? Hearing seen none? I want to go down to item nine, resolution 643 for surplus vehicles.
Okay, good evening again. So, resolution number 643. A resolution of the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, authorizing the sale of surplus department equipment. Adopted by the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 27th day of February 2024, with the following commissioners present and voting.
E.G. I would take, and change motion for resolution 643. Blacken? Oh, I thought we, I need a.
What is that list? Did you read the list?
I can. A 1999 Chevy 1500, a 2000 Dodge Caravan, a 2003 Chevy Tahoe, a 2004 Ford F-250, a 2006 Chevy Van.
Is there a warranty along with that?
Want one, Commissioner? All right. Any other questions? Or I, I need a motion.
I move to approve resolution.
643.
643.
Motion by Commissioner Vodino, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burris. Our motion and the second discussion on resolution 643. All right, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
unanimous decision, 643 passes. Thank you, Chief, 644.
Resolution number 644. A resolution of the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, authorizing the surplus and sale of a vehicle. Adopted by the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 27th day of February 2024, with the following commissioners present and voting.
In the minutes, it says a Ford Explorer.
Yes.
Gear condition?
It's a 2023 Ford Explorer interceptor.
Interceptor.
Can we get a little history on that? I mean, it seems unusual.
So we were in need of a new vehicle, and a decision was made to buy a Ford Explorer. It's gray. It has tinted windows. It looks very much like a police car. A large proportionate, a large portion of our staff don't really feel comfortable driving it because it looks so much like a police car. And I, having driven it for a week, people either go five miles an hour under the speed limit, or they speed away. One of the two. And it just, in a conversation with Des Moines, they're having a very hard time getting police cars. And this car actually matches a large portion of their fleet. In fact, they were parked side by side, and they look exactly the same. So.
They're the highest bidder.
Sorry?
Are they the highest bidder?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're willing to purchase the vehicle at a fair market value, and it allows us to purchase another vehicle without expending a large portion of district funds. So it helps them, and it helps us. Yeah. Oh, yes, we, we bought a vehicle just coming out of COVID and making the order, and supplies were very short. And so you couldn't actually get a red vehicle at the time. Now you can get red vehicles, which matches our fleet scheme. So it, it allows us to put something back in service that's red.
Any other questions?
Do we have to order something for you to drive, or what are you gonna drive?
Well, we'll just, we'll figure out who's gonna drive it, when do we get it? Currently, I have a staff vehicle, a red staff vehicle. We do still need one more vehicle for staff, and so we'll, we will rotate cars through once we get it. Delivery times are up in the air a little bit, so depending upon when it comes, we'll determine who drives it.
Any other questions? Need a motion for 644 surplus and sale of Ford Explorer?
Make a motion to surplus and sale of Ford Explorer.
By Commissioner Fuller, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Vodino. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 unanimous, thank you. Chief, resolution 645, pointing an agent to receive claims.
Trying to skip one. Resolution number 645. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, appointing an agent to receive claims against the district under chapter 4.96 of the Revised Code of Washington. Adopted by the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 27th day of February 2024, with the following commissioners being present and voting.
Questions for 645?
Who currently receives those claims?
I do. But now we need to update the paperwork, basically.
I'll take a motion, 645.
I'm of approval of resolution number 645.
Motion by Commissioner Gates, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Vodino. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous, thank you, 645 has passed. Resolution, resolution 646, adoption of IFC permit fee schedule after hours.
Yes, so resolution 646. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, regarding the adoption of IFC permit schedule, excuse me, permit fee schedule, after-hours inspection fee schedule and preventable response fees. Adopted by the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 27th day of February 2024, the following commissioners being present and voting.
Any questions?
Could you describe what, what each of those IFC after-hours preventable? What, what happens during each of those?
I'm gonna defer to Fire Marshal Sean Nichols. He actually is.
So the, was, I heard your, part of your question, was it regarding the after-hours fees?
No, what are, what are the definition of each of those of after-hours preventable response and fee schedule?
Okay. So the operational permits for barbecues, we are on our inspections, we are discovering barbecues in multiple businesses that have never had an LPG type permit before. And we don't feel that it's fair to issue a $50 permit for somebody that barbecues once a month or less. So we're just trying to create a special permit, if you will, that we issue that'll, they'll get a permit per the IFC, but there will be no charge for it. So that's, that's what that first one is. The second one is just, right now, we have after-hours fees, inspection fees. If somebody requests a, prior to 7:00 a.m., fire alarm test, for example, right now, we only collect, I think it's a hundred dollars an hour, and instead, we just change the wording to recoup the entire cost. And then finally, the preventable responses. That is, when it is that we have fire alarms or elevator service calls for the same building over and over again, we have nothing that makes them fix their system. This gives us a little bit of teeth to enforce them to fix their system and pay a monetary fee, with an understanding, though, that it comes through the Fire Marshal's office. And we can determine whether we actually find them or whether we say that money that you would have paid to us, you put towards a new system or repair.
Sounds good, thank you.
Marshal Nichols, I had a question on the preventable responses. So I read the paperwork, and you have first offense, second offense. Right? Is there anything further than that if there are repeat offenders?
Yes, we, I think it says $200 for each subsequent preventable response during a calendar year. So their first one is a free, they get no charge. Second one is $150, and then $200 for every, every response after that in a calendar year.
So tracking those folks and things like that to make sure that, again, they keep repeating that. There's something, are you thinking that if they keep going after, I'm just asking?
Yeah, no, it's, it'll be up to the crews to essentially issue them a preventable response that'll come to the Fire Marshal's office, and then we will track it and essentially be on top of these people to say what is going on. Because we can also implement a fire watch with a 24-hour security that is even more expensive than our fees here. So we, we have things to do, but this just gets it noted so that we have a record of it.
Okay. And I think in reference back to the, the IFC permit on the barbecues, I think, I know that's out there, but I know this is local HJ takes care of that. In another city, they want to, I think they're implementing that the whole city doing their thing there. Read the IFC, it is a local jurisdiction to take care of that, so be clear with that. Any other questions? Nah, take a motion?
Commissioner, adopt resolution 646.
Motion by Commissioner Fuller, is there a second?
Oh, second.
A second by Commissioner Vodino, any other discussion on the motion?
Not a discussion, but Sean, thank you.
Hearing seen then, is there, excuse me, all those in favor for 646, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. 646 passes. We're down to item 13, which is the TIF. I think, Chief, that's you.
Good afternoon, or good evening. So we had another meeting with the City of Federal Way Leadership as it relates to the TIF. And an offer was extended to the commissioners to have either the consultant or TIF city staff come make a presentation as it relates to the tax increment finance area and the financial implications to the district. It's probably not a bad thing for the board to just, to consider and make a recommendation on. However, it will probably require a special meeting. And I say that because they're gonna vote early in April on their ordinance. And if we wait till the end of March for the next meeting, we might be waiting a little too late. So if it's an interest to the chair, it's something that we can pursue to have either the city, sorry, had the city leadership or the consultant come make a presentation to the board.
There's a significant amount of money related to this agreement, isn't there?
Roughly $25 million over 25 years.
I think we ought to meet.
Chief, are they gonna wait for the bill to see if it goes through, or they're just gonna?
Their power in the.
Sorry.
And.
An answer.
Just, just based. Just just based on the last update that I saw, it has to pass by Friday. So and it's still in rules.
I think we should have them come.
Okay.
Commissioner Gates, have a comment.
Do we have any ideas to what the city is gonna do for us? Help mediate this?
No.
And I mean, shouldn't we know that before they do their thing in April?
Yes. So previously, the direction from the board was to to try and get an agreement before they signed the ordinance. So the the discussions are still moving forward. And there are some options on the table, but those probably need to be you probably need to hear what the city has to say or what the consultant has to say before we dive too deep into those.
It's buying a car without knowing what it looks like or having driven it.
Kind of.
It's ridiculous for them not to ask this and haven't asked us a lot earlier. This this discussion has gone on for months and months.
Yes.
I remember that it was pretty difficult to get them to talk months and months ago.
They are, the city has been very upfront that they want to make sure that there's a mitigation plan in place that works. It's it's the timing of that mitigation plan that's gonna be an issue.
I think for them, a quick memo, Chief, but you know, they had to educate themselves on.
Yes, and you know, the 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 goal of the TIF, right, is it creates money, creates an opportunity for them to to have money to ingest, to invest into infrastructure. And that does require a risk and a cash outlay from the city, roughly, you know, probably ten to fifteen million dollars for them to do what they want to do. And so I understand why there hasn't intent to make a concrete commitment just yet. But I think having the opportunity to have city staff here in front of the board and have a chance for you guys to ask questions would be beneficial.
I agree. Thank you. Oh, get your questions ready. Okay, thank you, Chief. Item fourteen. Don't have any questions? Item fourteen, Ministry of Team Report.
So the the board received this month's report for the commissioners. If there are any questions for staff, we'd gladly answer them.
Questions? Down on them. We are down to item fifteen, February budget.
Hey, we're in the second month of the year and we're doing well so far. So that's a good sign. We are should be at about sixteen and five tenths of a percent at budget and we are currently I'm sorry, that's where we're at. We were normally about sixteen point six seven percent and we're at sixteen and five tenths of a percent. So we're sixty-two hundredths of a percent under budget for the year. And for the particulars, I'll pass it to summer.
All right. Mid-month utilities totaling ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Accounts payable warrants totaling one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Payroll direct deposit totaling one million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. E F T P S payroll taxes totaling three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Medical claims processed as of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four totaling two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars and seven cents. Bringing our grand total to three million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you. Any questions? We're on to approval of vouchers. Any questions? Uh, I want to just take a motion, please.
I move to approve the vouchers.
Motion by Commissioner Vodino, is there a second?
Second.
And second by Chris Burris. Any other question on the on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anonymous, thank you. Vouchers have been approved. We're down to German. Is there any other business? Not. Returned. Thank you.